I call to order this regular meeting of the Mount Pleasant City Commission this Monday, January 27, 2020. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, has the role been taken?
It has. Tonight, all are present except for Commissioner Gillis, who is ill. And I would point out that tonight, my co-mayor is not in this seat. It is actually the city attorney Scott Hogan, who is filling in for Mike.
Welcome, Scott.
Thank you.
First on our agenda, we have a departmental presentation by information technology, Chris Salady.
Good evening. Tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about our information technology department and the role that we play in providing services to our citizens. Our primary job is to enhance the capabilities of our other departments, as well as protecting the city's digital assets. So I want to briefly just kind of cover our core areas that we focus on. First off is our network. We have five buildings that are connected by miles of, excuse me, by miles of fiber optic cable. Additionally, we have the Isabella County Sheriff, CMU Police Department, and Central Dispatch. They're also connected by fiber, so all of our law enforcement agencies can work together. As far as our servers go, we're primarily a virtualized environment. That means that we have one physical server, and there will be multiple virtual servers on each of those physical servers. The good thing about that is if one of our servers goes down, the virtual servers automatically move to one of the other physical hosts that are still functioning. Data backup, we have four layers of redundancy on all of our files. We have tens and tens of thousands of files. That adds up to about eight terabytes of data in total. For some frame of reference, if you took that same amount of data and it was digital photos, you'd have several million photos that we manage and back up. End-user support, we provide support to approximately 120 full-time employees, other temporary staff, and that's desktops, laptops, tablets, smartphones. If it lights up and plugs in, we support it. Purchasing, we provide advice and assistance to departments, whether it's enhancing efficiency, problem-solving, working on partnerships like that we have with CMU on our copier agreement. We manage the city's phone system, so this is like the desk phones, and that runs off of a virtualized server. For the website, we provide technical expertise for any major structural changes that need to be made. We manage all of the city's access control and security systems. And we're not electricians, so if it's a job of any size, we don't actually install. But if it's small enough, we will, but typically it's just maintenance. And then cybersecurity, this has really become a big thing for municipalities the past few years. You may have seen in the news, like last year, 22 cities in Texas were targeted in one attack. It's kind of gone from where cyber criminals used to just kind of throw this big wide net out there, and whoever got into it, got into it. But we've really seen a shift where cities, hospitals, universities, all sorts of organizations are targeted. Typically, a cyber breach is going to be caused by an end-user opening an attachment or clicking on a malicious link that they're not supposed to. Excuse me. And to sort of counteract that, there's really three pillars of cybersecurity. It's the people, so that's not only the IT staff being trained, but that's also our end-users. And we have recently begun, you know, sort of robust cybersecurity training. This includes like phishing tests. So we have a third-party vendor that will email our staff fictitious emails when we try to trick them into clicking on the links. They're not dangerous, but it's sort of, if they click on them, then they get an opportunity to sort of get educated on what they could have done differently and told that it was a phishing email. We have our processes. So this is keeping our operating systems updated, keeping our firmware up to date, just the basic, you know, solid computer security 101. And then we have our technology, which is things like our intrusion detection system, our firewall, our spam filter, our web filter. And one additional thing, if any of the city commissioners want to try the, or check out the cybersecurity training, we can make that available to you. So please reach out to City Manager Ridley, and we'll get that set up for you. Questions?
I have just one. I've heard that sometimes the Wi-Fi in downtown is kind of spotty or not adequate. Is that something that's being looked at to be improved?
That's actually something CMS Internet provides. And if I'm correct, after they had their generator fire this last summer, that's not currently up right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight? Seeing none, I will open our first opportunity for public input. We do have a public hearing on Special Assessment Number One, 2020, which concerns lighting on Michigan Street. So if you're here to talk about that, you will have another opportunity at the public hearing. But anything else on the agenda, you may come to the podium, state your name and your address, and you have five minutes to address the commission. Seeing no one come forward, I will now close the public input section. And we'll move to our receipt of petitions and communications. Manager Ridley?
Yes, on this section of the agenda tonight, you have the report on pending items. You have the minutes of the, or the December minutes of the Airport Advisory Board and the Planning Commission. You have the fourth quarter investment report. And you have the notification that the city of Mount Pleasant has again received the Certificate of Achievement in Certificate for Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, which I would note, this is the 32nd consecutive year that the finance staff has received that certificate from the Government Finance Officers Association. You also have the Planning Commission's annual report. And at the time the packet was put together, we had three communications related to the public hearing that you mentioned and the special assessment that were in your packet. One was from Glenn Irwin of 1018 Sweeney Street regarding property that he owns on Michigan Street. Donald Inman, who owns property at 311 West Michigan. And then the third one in the packet was from Richard LeBrenz, who owns Culligan Water on Michigan Street. And then on the dais tonight, we gave you copies of four communications that came in since the packet went out. One was from Jeremy Sheets, who's from IDFC Investments at 313 West Michigan. Kurt Ritchie at 122 South Washington. Todd Olivieri, who has central management at leasing at 301 West Michigan. And lastly, the Blackstone Bar, Mr. Steve Bissell at 212 West Michigan. So those are the communications we have for you this evening. And I would mention that although we don't take action typically in this part of the agenda, there are three items that we would be looking for some general guidance from the commission for, if possible, because we've had individuals contact us asking the commission to look at certain things this year. So we would like to get back to them to let them know if that's something that you're willing to take on this year or not. And in all three cases, the individuals have requested potential ordinance amendments. And none of them are simple ordinances that would be able to be put in place very easily. So we're looking for, based on your priorities, whether you expect these are issues that you would want to address this coming year. And the three items are the different rental housing licensing standards, dependent on the type of renter, which Mr. Berkshire sent you a communication at your last agenda. I believe most of you received an email from a gentleman who was interested in opening a scooter rental business. And then the third one was, we had a gentleman speak at your last evening, at your last commission meeting, about wanting to open a pedal trolley business. So as I said, we're not looking for you to take action, but I'm just looking for some general direction about whether there's enough of you that are interested in these that I could get back to those individuals and say, yes, it is something. I'm not sure of the timing of when we would do it, but it is something we will take up or let them know, no, it doesn't look like that's something that will be taken up in the near future. So I'm just looking for some guidance on those three items this evening.
Okay. Commissioner Al Zager?
I would support looking into all three.
Commissioner Lamone?
Me too.
Sure.
Commissioner Ronan?
The same. More broadly, though, with regard to the pedal car, I mean, just, should there be some, whether it's a scooter, a bike rental, or if we could broaden that, I'd be interested in it as well.
I'm in favor of looking at the scooter and the trolley issues.
But not the rental licensing one?
Not at this moment, no.
I'm in favor of looking at all three, just to give us some ideas of what is, what they're expecting or what they would like.
Yeah, I would say that too, all three.
Commissioner Tolles, did you have any comments?
Support of looking at the rental issue, and then support of the other two.
Okay.
Okay, I will get back to those three individuals and indicate that there seems to be a number of commissioners who are interested in them. So we will try to look at them this year, but I won't make any commitments about timing yet. But I will get back to them, so they're not left wondering.
I would just like to add, a great thanks goes to our treasurer and finance director, Mary Ann Cornexel, for three years of service and getting the highest, this award that we've received for 32 years is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting. And so I think I speak for the commission. I'm really proud of you and your staff and the community is, I'm sure, pleased as well. Next on our agenda is our consent calendar. Are there any items that need to be removed from the consent calendar tonight? Seeing none, I will ask Manager Ridley to go into our consent calendar items.
The items we're recommending for your approval tonight, excuse me, include the minutes of your regular meeting of January 13. We only have one bid this evening, and that's for the replacement of our access control system. And this project was in the operating budget to replace the access system to both City Hall and Department of Public Safety. And the project plan also included putting our water plant, our wastewater plant, and our DPW street buildings on the same system for consistency and ease of administration. As the memo in your packet indicates, all of the bids came in over the budgeted amount quite significantly. So we initiated discussions with the vendor who best met the criteria in the RFP and talked to him about removing some of the less often-used doors from the bid. So while removing those doors, he still kept the same per-door pricing in his bid for the remaining ones. And it was able to reduce the project cost to $56,414. So we're recommending awarded the bid to Master Electric for $56,414, plus the first year of licensing for a total, licensing for $1,280. And even with this revised bid, it's approximately $8,000 over budget. So we're recommending the appropriate budget amendment. The next item on the consent calendar is we're recommending a professional services contract with Mead and Hunt. In 2016, we were put on notice by the FAA that we had trees in proximity of the approach to the airport that were creating protrusions that needed to be removed. So in 2017 and 18, we contracted with Mead and Hunt to negotiate the purchase of the appropriate navigation easements and the oversight of the bids to remove the trees in Phase One, which was the primary area of concern. And it's now time for us to begin work on the Phase Two area. And Mead and Hunt has submitted their professional services contract for that Phase Two area. The work plan and the contract have been reviewed by the appropriate individuals at MDOT because FAA and MDOT actually cover 95% of the entire project cost. And the recommendation was also reviewed by our Airport Advisory Board. So we're recommending you authorize a contract with Mead and Hunt for Phase Two professional services. The contract is an amount of $97,313, but the city portion is only 5% of that, which is just under $4,900. And we do have our airport manager in the audience tonight, as well as the consultant that works with us from Mead and Hunt, Stephanie Ward, if you should have any specific questions about the project at this point. Next, we're suggesting that you set a public hearing on the medical marijuana ordinance changes. The proposed changes merely clarify the documents that are required to be submitted to the city upon application for a license. We talked about this briefly in December as part of our one-year review of the ordinance, and the commission seemed supportive of making that clarifying change. So the city attorney has drafted the appropriate ordinance amendment, and all we're doing tonight is setting a public hearing for February 10. And then we're asking also for another public hearing on February 10, which would be to obtain public input into a grant application that we're in the process of submitting through the Michigan Economic Development Corporation Infrastructure Resiliency Program. And one of the grant requirements is to hold a local public hearing before it's submitted. And this grant will cover projects that we have scheduled over the next couple of years in our capital improvement plan at the wastewater treatment plant. That would include the rebuilding of both digesters and four primary clarifiers and the construction of a receiving station. So we're suggesting a public hearing on February 10. And then the last item is approval of payrolls and warrants.
I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar items.
So moved.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent calendar as presented, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed the same. So that's unanimous, six-zero. Next on our agenda is a public hearing on the necessity of the public improvement to consider Resolution Three to proceed with improvements and Resolution Number Four to accept the special assessment role and to set a public hearing for February 10 for Special Assessment District Number One, 2020. Before I open the public hearing, Nancy Ridley, or Manager Ridley, did you have any comments?
Yeah, I'll just give a quick overview, just to make sure everyone understands the scope of the project. This is for the installation of new pedestrian lights on Michigan Street between Oak and Washington. And this project is being done in conjunction with a reconstruction of that street this summer. The total project cost for just the lighting is currently estimated at $120,000, but it has not yet been competitively bid. That will happen over the ensuing next couple of months. Consistent with our prior installations, we've recommended a special assessment district since the properties are Zoned CD5. And tonight is the scheduled public hearing on the necessity of the project. As I indicated during the receipt of petitions and communications, you've already received seven written communications regarding this proposed project, the three that were in your packet, and the four that are on the dais tonight. And there's a couple of pieces of information that might be helpful for you and anyone that might be here for the public hearing to know before the public hearing starts. And I guess those couple of things that I would mention is, in 2014, which is when we started the process of installing pedestrian lighting throughout the city, when that became a priority, the funding has consistently been based on a parameter of using a special assessment when the lighting occurs in properties that used to be zoned, what was M1 and M2 and commercial. And properties that were in our prior, in our residential districts, or what used to be our districts, those did not have a special assessment associated with them. So under our current zoning designations, what that means is properties with a CD3 or a CD3L would not be especially assessed for pedestrian lighting. But properties with both, within both a CD4 and a CD5 would be, to follow that consistent practice. At various times since 2014, the question has come up about the appropriateness of using special assessment for pedestrian lighting. And the city attorneys have previously reviewed it and supported it as an appropriate funding mechanism. Some of the communications talked about the fact that lights already exist on Michigan Street, which they in fact do. But this project would make the lighting brighter and more consistent throughout the whole street. Currently, there's 10 poles, and this project would increase the number to, I believe it's 18, or, I'm sorry, 16 poles. And this would provide better consistent coverage throughout the whole street. This, when we reconstructed Broadway Street last year, those lights were not replaced because even though some of them are taller and shorter, when they were designed, they had a similar, the preferred light coverage area. So those did not have to be replaced when we did the Broadway project. But Michigan Street does not have as consistent of that coverage area that is generally preferred. And then the last thing that I would mention is the principal district's special assessment, which is only paid by downtown property owners, has never been used for infrastructure projects. The principal shopping district special assessment is used to fund more of the landscaping and beautification in the downtown area, the grounds care, and snow removal in the parking lots and in the sidewalks around the parking lots. And then for a couple of years, for power washing of the sidewalks. But it has typically not been used for infrastructure-type projects. So with that, after you hold the public hearing, there's two additional resolutions for you to consider, but we can discuss those after you hear additional public comments.
At this time, I will open the public hearing. If you wish to speak on this topic, you can come to the podium, state your name and your address, and you have five minutes to address the commission.
Hi, yes, Glenn Irwin, 1018 Sweeney Street, Unit C, Mount Pleasant. I'd like to say that I am speaking on behalf of Red Iron LLC. And I'd just like to read my letter. It'll address some of the issues that we've been talking about here tonight. In the memorandum dated December 16, 2019, written by Mary Ann Cornexel, the reason for the allocation is stated. The basis for the allocation, according to the memorandum, is to make the property owners feel safer. The thesis in the memorandum is that the property owners are specially benefited because the lighting makes them feel safer. This is not verbatim, but I asked the mayor and the city commissioners to refer to Paragraph Number Two of the memorandum to see the entire rationale. The Michigan Supreme Court in Casban versus City Granville, 1993, said that special assessments are permissible only when the improvements result in an increase in the value of the land specially assessed. I asked the mayor and the city commissioners to have the city attorney provide them with a copy of this case so that they may make an informed decision. My primary objection is that if the city does proceed with Special Assessment 1-20, that it will be contrary to proper legal procedure. Having property owners feel safer does not appear to be a proper reason to have a special assessment. I ask that the mayor and the city commissioners vote down this proposal. In my opinion, it would be better for the city to write a new proposal with evidence presented that the lighting project actually would result in increased values for the parcels to be assessed. Proceeding along with the current proposal would appear to be improper. I have some other objections as well. I'll just go over a couple of them. What happened to Tifa? I thought Tifa was paying for some of these projects. I guess we don't do that anymore. Property owners in the principal shopping district have been paying PSD tax for 15 or so years. The city has raised its tax nearly 50% in the last five years. The PSD revenue was supposed to pay for projects such as lighting. A special assessment for lighting is listed on the spreadsheet for the PSD. Why do property owners on Michigan Street have to pay regular taxes, PSD taxes, and a special assessment? Other property owners in the city have gotten pedestrian lighting by paying only one tax. Why do property owners on Michigan Street have to pay regular tax, PSD tax, and a special assessment? And Michigan Community Capital gets 50% property tax reduction, as well as the use of two city-owned parking lots. Michigan Community Capital at the parcel B property is apparently benefiting from the city making improvements to that property, but is not having to pay a special assessment. That's pretty much it. I'll let other people speak now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Irwin.
Donald Inman, 311 West Michigan Street. Myself personally, I think we have adequate lighting down there. Just about every building has motion lights or outside lights on them. There's more things to address down Michigan Street. Instead of lighting, like in front of my building, like 10 years ago, when they redone and repaved the street, now I've got a water hole that sits in front of it all the time. The pavement's all coming apart, which is going to be redone. But they took the sewer drain out there and never put one back in. I just think we have better things to address than the lights. Thank you.
Seeing no one else.
Name is Steve Bissell. I'm the owner of Blackstone Bar, 212 West Michigan. Commission, a lot of times, some of these things get forgotten. I've sat in your seat from 2006 to 2008. What we've done is we've transferred some of the board's responsibilities. We've assigned new board responsibilities. And what's being reported right now is that the PSD does maintenance work. That was not the inception of the PSD. They were responsible for a lot of different things. It happens to be that way right now, but that wasn't the way it always was. I've talked to several city staff. I don't know if you've read my letter. I've tried to work with the city when we've had financial shortfalls, when the sidewalks need to be replaced. We took the most inconvenient, least expensive in front of the Blackstone. I tried to cooperate. Whenever I inquired about the lighting inconsistencies, I was always told grants, or was told that they would be addressed in the future. I come to you not so much about whether it's needed or not, but as a matter of fairness. I've asked several different commissions. I've paid principal shopping district assessments. I've paid property taxes. I've let them know on several occasions that east of Michigan Street or Washington Street, the lights are twice as frequent. They have twice as many lights as I do. And I've asked if we could have that rectified. Well, maybe in the future, maybe in the future. I guess what I'm asking you right now is because we've delayed this and because we've assigned financial responsibilities to other portions of Mount Pleasant, now we've assessed levies on this property. And I'm asking you to go back. When I requested this, you said you had no money. The warranty never wore out. You guys never acted on it. These lights, if they were designed correctly in the first place, being contiguous- These lights, if they were designed correctly in the first place, being contiguous in the Principal Shopping District, you would notice that they're half as much. That's detrimental. It's been detrimental to my business for several years. When you look at the fact that if you walk down Main or Broadway, that looks like we're downtown, but if you walk in the off-streets, it's not, but I'm still part of the Principal Shopping District. I've come to this commission before and asked them, if you don't want to rectify the situation, I ask you, please, release me from the Principal Shopping District. No response. Now, folks, I understand, you know, we're all in this community together and we all want to better it, but at some point, we've got to have a sense of fairness, because if we don't, you know, I shouldn't have to oppose my neighbor down the street. You know, he says there isn't a need for lights, and quite honestly, if it was designed correctly, we wouldn't be debating this. You would have installed them all the same. So, now I'm in opposition, which I really shouldn't be. He has a daytime business. I have a nighttime business. You know, do I need lights? With a lot of college students walking or picking up rides, we do need the lights. I'm not trying to argue against the lights, but, you know, this has been brought up before, and if we're going to make exceptions for other projects going on where we're going to accept them into the general fund, I would ask, in this situation, you do the same, because this is not a new issue. This was brought up prior to when we started assessing the property owners, and then I guess I would ask you with the lights, why would we be rebuying them if we had done it correctly in the first place? Why would I be adding? Why would I be trying to match? We wouldn't be. Now, again, I can give you names. I'd be happy to talk to you individually, but I would ask that, in this instance, you would see the fairness and include this either in the general, or opt out for our special assessment and fund it through Tifa or something. There's, there's better ways to do this in fairness. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bissell. Seeing no one else coming forward, I will now close the public comment section. Public hearing, I'm just saying, correct. And I would open up to the commission to consider Resolution Number Three. Commissioner Tolles.
I would like to table this until we get a little more information. In the realm of, I think, some of the comments I can agree with, I don't think the spacing was incorrect in the, correct in the first place, number one. Number two, those lights aren't even probably four or five years old. They're all LED, and I don't see the purpose of scrapping 10 lights out and putting 16 in when we can go at the corners of Washington Pine and Oak, get higher lights, put those at each intersection, take the smaller lights out, and then fill them in and space them correctly. We've already done this on Broadway Street and Main Street, so I don't see a purpose of scrapping all this. The city was going to participate and put 39,000 in of that. I think with $39,000 and taking 10,000 out of the PSD, I think we can pay for this and make everybody happy.
So, I want to enter, I want to understand your motion before we move forward. So, you want to table Resolution Three, which is acceptance that the commission deems it advisable and necessary to proceed with the special assessment, and you want to know if we can reuse the lights that are currently there and space them in a different pattern?
Correct.
And if we can get $10,000 from the PSD fund or board?
Yes.
I would need a second for this to move forward.
I'd, I'd second that. Can, I'd like to make a friendly amendment, but I guess there is no such thing. I'd second it, but also with the idea that we just look at it and look at these different options, and so that it's a little more robust, that if that's okay with you, Petro. I mean, that we, you know, come up with just some ideas about what might be able to take place to use the lights and, you know, schedule them differently, or, you know, slate them differently.
Okay. So, I'd open this up for discussion.
Mayor, can I ask a quick question? Are you talking about Resolution Three and Four?
Just Three.
Or just Three?
We're just talking about, we should be just talking about Three.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm only talking about Three.
Yeah. Commissioner Lalone, did you have something to add?
No, I'll give a second.
Okay.
That's it.
Is there any other discussion on the motion?
Mayor, can I say something, or maybe you can do questions first?
Commissioner, I'd like to recognize Commissioner Lalone.
That's fine. I mean, it's, I don't, we're, I'll, let's hear what Nancy has to say, and then I'll talk.
Yeah.
The only comment I was going to make is, the lights that are currently on Michigan Street are the fairly decorative blue lights that are more expensive than what we were proposing to put onto Michigan Street, which is consistent with our other pedestrian lightings, which are more black cement poles, and the reason we did that is because of the cost of the more decorative blue ones. So, we can look at these options of redesigning to try to reuse some poles there, but one of the downsides is, if we want the poles to match, we're going to have to look at some type of blue poles so that they match a little bit better, most likely. I'm not sure of the costs of those, or we would have to accept the fact that we would have some blue decorative poles and some black, more plain poles. So, we can look at various options of that. I just wanted to point out that the poles that we were planning to put in are much less decorative and much less expensive, so we would have to look through what engineering can do to mix and match that, or what options might be available to do that.
Commissioner Lalone?
I would agree that I think we need, I personally need more information on this issue, because I think Commissioner Tolles brings up a good point that maybe there are different ways we could finagle this, and it sounds like, to me, the Principal Shopping District is supposed to be used for this sort of thing, and I'd like to get more information about that as well, because personally, I feel like if we believe pedestrian lighting is good for the well-being of our citizens, I don't think that should be a special assessment, personally, but I'd like to get more information about it.
Okay. I would like to add that I'm supportive of getting more information. I am skeptical of getting monies from the PSD. I know that's a board that they would have to probably approve that. I know that, I don't believe the PSD is running a surplus, and they're trying to run the things that they do on basically, you know, trying to match what they assess as closely to what they spend, so I don't, I would be shocked to find out that they have 10 extra $1,000 to spend on this lighting, but it's, I'm sure it's something we can have staff look into. So. Commissioner Tolles?
Just one other comment that Nancy was talking about, about the, trying to get all the poles to match, and that's what I thought we were basically trying to do, to get Broadway Street, Main Street, and Michigan Street all matching. The higher lights, you can get something that's comparable to those lights right there and paint them blue. Nobody's going to go up with a microscope and look at them and say, whoa, those aren't the same as Main or Broadway Street. You just paint them blue, and at each intersection, there's two high poles, and then there's small poles. There's a mix of that on Broadway now. You have the same mix. You have high poles, light poles, and low poles, so I don't see what the difference is, and you're taking 10 lights and just scrapping them out that are four or five years old, that are LED lights. I just, it's a waste of money. You need to repurpose those and use them. Thank you.
Do we have any other discussion? So, all those in favor of the motion of tabling item number three, to get more information on the items that we've discussed, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed the same. So, that is unanimous. Given that we've tabled Resolution Number Three, I believe Resolution Number Four is sort of a moot point at this juncture. So, we will move on to item number 12, which is to consider a parking easement agreement with Michigan Community Capital, and I would ask Manager Ridley to introduce the topic.
Yes, on this topic, as you are aware, the actual real estate closing for the sale of 410 West Broadway did take place on December 19th, and the ownership of that piece of land has been transferred to Michigan Community Capital. One of the requirements that was a part of the purchase and development agreement was to record a document that committed that parking lot 12 on Broadway Street, and the parking lot north of City Hall would remain public parking, and as we began drafting that agreement for the closing documents, we realized that the purchase and development agreement was silent regarding any fees that may be charged for parking in those two public parking lots, and so, as we began talking with Michigan Community Capital about that, there were some concerns about not having any indications about what those fees might be for that public parking. So, the agreement that's before you tonight has been drafted and reviewed by both Michigan Community Capital's attorney and our city attorney, and it meets the requirements of the approved purchase agreement, but goes one step further to commit that the fees for those two parking lots would be the same as the fees that we have for other downtown parking lots, to make sure that they're treated consistently, and it would also indicate that the increase in those fees could not go up by more than the CPI in any given year. Since the fee piece was new to this document, it was not signed as part of the closing documents, because we've, as I indicated, we felt it went one step further than what the purchase and development agreement had indicated, so we're asking you tonight to authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement that's in front of you this evening, with one small change to it. As we did a final read-through, but we realized in Paragraph Two on Page Two, it calls out three existing easements that exist for the property, and gives the libra page numbers, and we realized that one is missing, so we would enter, in that paragraph, we would reference another libra page of 14, libra 1415, page 998, to call out a currently existing easement. We do have representatives from Michigan Community Capital here tonight if you have any questions on the parking, and as I indicated, Mr. Hogan is here from Foster Swift, and he was involved in the drafting of the agreement, but we would recommend you authorize the mayor and the clerk to sign it as presented with that one small change, with the additional libra and page noted. So moved.
So, I guess...
Second.
Okay.
Jumped on it.
Do we have discussion? Commissioner Tolles?
A couple of quick things. Under Section Four, Maintenance and Operations, basically, the city is taking on the liability of repairs, replacement, that are necessary to keep the existing surface improvement in a good, safe, and usable condition, and debris, snow, and ice removal. How do we expect to do this in the adjacent parking lot, when you're going to have tenants that are living in those apartments, that are going to have those vehicles parked there, and how are you going to properly clean that lot? Is one of my Another question is, under Two, we're looking at a 30-year term on this agreement, and then my other question is, we are granting this and tying it into the land itself. So, in other words, MCC leaves, they sell us to somebody else, and we start having problems. You've got a 30-year agreement. I think it shouldn't be tied to the land. I think it should be tied to MCC, as long as they own it. If they leave and sell to somebody else, then, then it's a different problem from that point. Those are my comments on it, and I don't think I'll be supporting this.
So, point of information, when, when you brought up item number four of Maintenance and Operation, I might be mistaken, but I didn't read that to cover that we would be covering the parking lot at 410.
No, it's the, I think Commissioner Tolles was referring to our public parking lots that we're committing to do that for, and how do we do that when their tenants may be parking there? And we have that situation throughout all of downtown, because we have tenants in downtown that park in our other public parking lots, and we have a, an even and an odd system, so that if it is going to snow and we need to do significant clearing of the parking lots, we have a way to contact them and ask them to move their cars to a certain area of the parking lot, so we can remove the snow, and if we have to maintain the lots, we temporarily close them down for a period of time and direct people other places to park. So, we already do that with tenants downtown, and I would assume we would follow similar practices for these two public parking lots, and as far as the term of it, the amendment to the purchase and development agreement included that term in it, so that was originally what was approved.
Commissioner Tolles?
One comment on that. Where does this agreement say that in here? I don't, I don't see it in here, and from the way I'm reading this, you cannot restrict them from not using that parking lot. So, you're telling me you're going to tell them on odd and even days that you're not going to be able to park there? I don't see that in this agreement. How are we going to enforce that?
There's something in here that...
Section Three of the agreement provides that the city can set reasonable rules and regulations for the use of the parking lot, and can temporarily close it if it needs to do so.
Do we, we, we could ticket people if they chose not to move their vehicle?
If they didn't follow the reasonable...
If they didn't follow the reasonable rules, yes.
Right. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of approving the motion as presented, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed the same.
Aye.
So, that passes five to one.
Okay.
Next on our agenda is item number 13, which is to consider an engineering services contract with C2AE for various 2020 wastewater treatment plant projects. Manager Ridley?
Yes, throughout this year, we expect various small projects will need some design engineering services from an outside engineering firm for various projects we have at the wastewater treatment plant, and because of their interrelatedness and the complexity of some, how some of these various projects fit together, happening simultaneously, we believe using the same firm will be more efficient and more cost-effective. No single project by itself would require approval of the city commission, but we believe the cumulative effect of using one firm for multiple projects is likely to exceed the $20,000 purchasing threshold, so therefore, to be ahead of that, we're asking for your approval tonight for a not-to-exceed contract with C2AE to design these various small-dollar projects throughout the year. Each project would be assigned and scoped and overseen by our wastewater treatment supervisor, Tim Middleton, and the not-to-exceed amount throughout the entire year would be $30,000, which is the budgeted amount for those various small projects, so we're recommending you approve the not-to-exceed contract with C2AE for those services for this year.
I would entertain a motion.
I move that we support contract with C2AE for the various smaller 2020 wastewater treatment plant projects.
So, wait, Commissioner Tolles, second. Discussion? I would just like to thank staff for bringing this to us. I think there have been concerns in the past with, when you set a dollar limit about what things are brought to what things are brought to us, that sometimes it, it leaves those smaller projects sort of off our radar. And I think staff recognize that the commission likes to be informed about what's going on, and they probably didn't have to do this, and they chose to anyways. And I appreciate Manager Ridley's efforts in this, in this area, so. Seeing no other discussion, all those in favor of approving the motion, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed the same. That is six zero. Next on our agenda is item number 17, which is appointment to city commissioners, to city standing and special committees. And this is my opportunity to talk a lot. To the appointments committee, I am appointing as chair, Vice Mayor Perschbacher, Commissioner Al Sager, and myself. To the Central Michigan Center for Recovery, Education, and Wellness, I am appointing Commissioner Al Sager. To the charter committee, I am appointing myself as chair, Commissioner Ronan, and Vice Mayor Perschbacher. To the council and governments, I am appointing myself. To the intergovernmental liaison is the mayor and vice mayor, so it would be myself and Vice Mayor Perschbacher. The international relations slash sister city council, I am appointing Vice Mayor Perschbacher and myself as the alternate. The Mount Pleasant Area Diversity Council, I am appointing, where is it?
Me.
That's right, Commissioner Lalone. And to the property committee, I am appointing Commissioner Al Sager as chair, Commissioner Ronan, and Commissioner Lalone. Next on our agenda is item number 18, which is consider appointment of city commissioners to applicable city boards and commissions. And for these items, it will require a motion and a vote. To the audit committee, I am appointing Commissioner Tolles, myself, and Commissioner Ronan as the alternate. To the city CMU liaison committee, I am appointing Commissioner Al Sager and Commissioner Gillis. To the Economic Development Corporation/Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, I am appointing myself as the representative and Commissioner Gillis as the alternate. To the principal shopping district board, I am appointing Commissioner Ronan. And to the tax increment finance authority, I appointed myself. So I would ask for a motion to approve these appointments as presented. Commissioner Tolles?
Motion approved as presented.
Commissioner Al Sager?
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed the same. And that is six zero. Next on our agenda is item number 19, which is consider a special meeting for April 9th, 2020, at 6:00 PM for a joint meeting between the city commission and the planning commission. Manager Ridley, would you like to introduce this?
I would just indicate that generally, we have an annual meeting with the two boards, and the last couple of years, that meeting has fallen on a city commission night. So we thought this year, it might be nice to try to schedule it on the night of a planning commission so that they are less inconvenienced. So we've recommended that it be set for Thursday, April 9th, at 6 o'clock, right before their regular meeting that evening.
Vice Mayor Perschbacher?
I support the special meeting with the planning commission on April 9th at 6:00 PM, which is a Thursday.
Okay, you have a motion?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Ronan. Any discussion? I would just like to add that although it's going to be less of an inconvenience for the planning commission, I also think it's a convenience for us. I think the last two, two years, we meet with the planning commission before our regular meeting, and as anybody knows, there are dozens of things to be worried about. And so I think this gives us an opportunity to solely focus on the planning commission and zoning ordinance issues that we'll be discussing, so. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed the same. And that is six zero. Next on our agenda is to consider setting a special meeting for February 3rd, 2020, at 5:30 PM for a city commission team-building dinner. And I will ask Manager Ridley to introduce this.
Typically, we start out the year with an opportunity for each of you to get to know each other a little bit better, especially as new commissioners come in. And we found that that's helpful before we start discussions about setting priorities, both for this year and goals for the following year. So it was suggested this year that maybe an informal dinner might be appropriate, but we're recommending that be set as a special meeting to comply with the Open Meetings Act because you'll obviously be talking about city business, even though you won't be taking any action that evening. So we've recommended you consider setting that meeting for February 3rd at 5:30. And if it's approved, we will work to identify a location and include it in the public posting and make sure you know where that location is.
I move that we set the special meeting for February 3rd at 5:30.
Commissioner Al Sager?
Support.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed the same. So that is passed unanimously. And item number 21 is to consider restrictive covenant requirements associated with the Economic Development Association grant for the Industrial Park South retention pond project.
I'm actually going to suggest that you do a motion to postpone this topic until your February 10th meeting, but I would still like to give you some of the background information and the public so that you have some time to think about it before action is needed at your next meeting. So we previously reported to you that we had been notified, we received a $230,000 federal grant, which is enough to cover 80% of the cost of expanding the detention pond in Industrial Park South. And the reason for this project was to allow for expansion of the park because the current pond is over its rated capacity, and therefore, any additional building that happens in the park requires onsite detention for any expansions or new builds. So to maximize the potential of the park, the expansion of the park, or of the pond became necessary. When we received the grant award documents, it was the first time that we learned of a requirement that is part of the grant that would require us to record a restrictive covenant for the city-owned parcel regarding the future use of the parcel. And the restriction on the parcel where the detention pond is really didn't cause us any concern because almost the entire parcel is comprised of the detention pond, and there really is no additional future use of it. But when we received the grant award, we learned that the federal government, or the EDA, is requiring that restrictive covenant also be placed on the three-and-a-half-acre parcel that is owned by the city's Economic Development Corporation. And the rationale, according to the EDA, is because that the city's Economic Development Corporation is also an eligible entity for such a grant, and so they felt it important that the covenant be applied to that parcel as well. And our concern with the restrictive covenant is that the EDA retains authority about the future use of that parcel. And from what we've been able to learn thus far, as long as it's used solely for industrial purposes, there probably isn't any issue. But our zoning for industrial parks allows us to use, to allow some commercial activity to take place in the industrial zones as well. And we would be at risk of the EDA approving that commercial activity if the purchaser wanted to do that. In addition, because it's federal funds, we have concerns that the EDA may not allow a future use that is a marijuana-related business because marijuana is illegal at the federal level, and we're afraid that they may not allow that as a future use. And in each of those cases, if they didn't allow it, what would happen is we, the city would be required to repay part of the grant award if that were to happen. And we're not exactly certain how that's calculated, about what we would have to repay. It's a little gray at this point in time. And so we're concerned for a couple of reasons. One, the future marketability of that EDC-owned parcel. And secondly, the potential of maybe having to repay part of that grant in the future if the EDA disagrees with the future use of it. So we've been trying to work with the EDA to try to get them to reconsider having that covenant applied to the EDC-owned parcel. And thus far, we have not been successful in getting them to make that agreement. But our city attorney, Scott Hogan, has been working with them as well, and he's trying to get ahold of the EDA attorney to see if we can make some progress that way. Originally, we had, we thought we had to have it on your agenda this evening because our grant requirement indicates we have to return the grant acceptance by January 31st. But we did find out on Thursday that they've given us a two-week extension of that. So they've said we now have until February 14th to decide to accept the grant. So because of that, we think that it's worthwhile to try to spend some time over these next couple of weeks for the attorney to work with the EDA attorney to see if we can make, get some movement on the requirement for that EDC-owned parcel. If we don't make any progress there, the options that will be available to you when we bring it back to you on February 10th will either be to indicate that we do not intend to record that restrictive covenant on the EDC-owned parcel, which means, likely means that we will lose the grant. Or the second option would be to go ahead and accept the grant, saying that we will do that, recognizing it may affect the future marketability of the sale of that site and may result in some potential paybacks. And again, we're hoping to get some better clarification about what that payback amount might be before February 10th. If you take the second option of saying that you're okay with the restrictive covenant, we believe that the EDC board would also have to consent to that because they're the legal owner of that parcel of land, and we don't believe that we can just impose that on that parcel of land without their consent. So they would have to take action as well if you go with option two. So having said all of that, we hope to have more information for you in two weeks. So we're recommending that you go ahead and postpone action on this until February 10th, and hopefully, we'll be able to give additional information at that time before you have to make a decision.
Can we ask other questions, or do we have to move on first?
I'd like to have a motion first. Commissioner Tolles?
I'll make a motion to postpone the covenant of purpose until the February 10th on the Industrial Park South property.
Okay. And then a second by Vice Mayor Perschbacher. And then Commissioner Ronan?
If we're postponing it, can we talk, I mean, the only concern I have is, just in my head, I'm thinking we're meeting on the 10th, it has to be in by the 14th. Does the EDC approve it before we do, or do we just try to get them to do it within three days? Or, I mean, how does that?
We actually have an EDC meeting on Wednesday of this week, so we're going to go through the same explanation with the EDC group, and we can see how they want to handle it as well. If they're not ready to take action either, we'll go ahead and schedule another meeting between February 10th and February 14th, so we have it on the books if needed.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed the same. And that is unanimous. Next on our agenda is announcements on city-related issues and new business. I guess I'll start. This, this Saturday, Man vs. Mountain will be here in, oh, in Island Park and the surrounding area. I believe they start at 8:00 in the morning, and you can still register the morning of the race. I think online registration is closed currently, but there are various different ways to register. If you're a student, you get a reduced rate, and you'll get a T-shirt and a mug and some free food and some gloves and an awesome time in our parks. So come on out. Commissioner Al Sager?
I just wanted to take a moment, since I'm still a new kid on the block, to give my thanks to the city staff that's been so helpful and welcoming as I get started. You know, it's kind of a little bit of a learning curve, and I do appreciate the good help.
Can I second that? I mean, they really have been terrific, actually. I am also very appreciative. Thank you. Very nice, Mary.
Seeing no other announcements, or Commissioner Tolles?
Motion adjourned.
We cannot adjourn yet. We still have another public comment section, so. Is there any other announcements or new business? Okay, seeing none, I will open up our last public comment section for the evening. You can come to the podium, state your name and your address, and you have five minutes to address the commission on any city-related business. Seeing no one come forward, I will close the public comment section. And I will recognize Commissioner Tolles' motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Al Sager. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? We are adjourned at 8:05.